Okay, I'm gonna call the special board meeting, the board reorganization meeting on May 4th, 7 o'clock at Hubble Middle School. This is Hutchison, would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Mr. Matheson, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Truly. Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, we have one item tonight, the approval of outstanding minutes. The actual item is approval of outstanding minutes from April 14th, 2021, open and closed, and April 28th, 2021, open and closed. Any information from Dr. Schuler?
No additional information.
Any questions or comments from board members? Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve the outstanding minutes of April 14th, 2021, and open and close in April 28th, 2021, open and close?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Erickson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Matheson, how appropriate. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, the motion passes as presented. Next up, as we are concluding our board here this evening, we have a couple board members who have, will be retiring from the board, Mrs. Erickson and Mr. Matheson. We have a, the board has a small certificate here for you to just kind of recognize and thank you for your years of service and all the great accomplishments that we've been able to accomplish as a group over the last four years with Mrs. Erickson and last eight years with Mr. Matheson. I can say as president, one of the things I'm most proud of, at least over the last year, is how we've worked through the challenges of the last year and the pressures and the changes together as a team. We've, we were able to have great conversation, challenging questions, and have a good, a good dialogue for the community. And very proud of the fact that we've been able to accomplish what we have and how we stayed together and supported the effort and continued to try to do what's best for our, our students while respecting the, the needs and desires of both our community, teachers, and staff. So, kind of some of my opening comments, again, Jenna and Jim, thank you for your friendship and service to our community and our schools, and we wish you both well on your retirement.
Mr. Paulson, can I just add one thing too, I think just, just important to recognize, in addition to the current board, that Mr. Matheson and Ms. Erickson's names are certainly on the plaque inside of the brand-new Jefferson Early Learning Center. And again, I know you've reflected on kind of recent as in past year, but I, but I do think legacy certainly of this board, a huge accomplishment is bringing that project certainly across the finish line. And it's, it is a brand-new, beautiful, early childhood center, really serving the, the needs of our, our community. So, again, I just wanted to recognize that and say that is not an accomplishment that all boards have an opportunity to, to achieve, but your names are inside of that building and will be there as long as that building is there. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Any other board members want to make comments on this item?
I'll start. Both of you, I have such a high level of respect for. Jim, I, I think back when I first started, six years ago, and the idea of school finance was a really intimidating thing. And I, I remember coming out of a, a workshop at our state conference, and I sat down next to you at another one, and you just made it easy for me. You, you said, "I'll always be here. Ask me questions." And I really appreciated that. It was hard coming onto the board as the only new board member that year. And you just have always been there. I, I think your legacy, one of the things that I would like to continue with is the questions that you ask. You are always very, making sure that community knows what's going on. And Jenna, you know, I, I go back to four years ago when you first were running for the board, and I looked at you with such awe as when I heard you say, "I've talked to all 20 principals, and I've been in every school," and all the things that you did, from the minute you put your name on that ballot, to even last board meeting where you were still there asking all of those questions. And I think both of you, you know, bring that legacy of you really dug in deep. And, you know, as a, as a team, as Brad mentioned, this past year has been tough, but one of the things that all of us sitting around this table, we all have respect. And, you know, we don't have to agree on everything, but I greatly so appreciate your perspectives that both of you have, have brought during your tenure here. So, thank you for your service.
Yeah.
I just want to thank you both so much. Jim, I've, I think I've said this too, but you've always been one of my favorite board members, because when I would sit out in that audience for many years, to Chris's point, you would always ask, I would be writing down questions, and then they'd get to you and you'd ask almost all of those questions. And I so appreciate that. And I know, you know, sometimes people pick on you for talking a lot, and I, I love it. I think it's great. I think the more we can let our public know, I, I think it's fantastic. So, thank you so much for your service, and I've learned so much from you, so thank you. And Jenna, I learned, again, it's just you've been there for me personally, as a parent, trying to navigate how to be a board member and a parent. And I just thank you so much for that, and I will definitely miss you. And I think I, I shared this with Jenna, like I, I'm just a visual person. And when we went through this last year, it's, it sounds, it's gonna sound very silly, but I, it just was the image that always came in my head as we went through this, that, you remember the, the children's game, I think it was called Red Rover, you know, Red Rover, Red Rover, and someone would try to break through the chain. And I just always pictured us as a team, with the senior leadership team and our board. We walked into this and we linked arms. And we had so many people trying to knock us down and to get through and to break through and to break us, and, and we stayed together and we kept that chain and that trust and respect for all of us sitting here. And I, I will never forget that. And I, I don't think I will ever forget anybody's name on this board and on this senior leadership team. So, I just, I, I thank you so much for your service and for completing this, this really wonderful team that, where we all made it through this very difficult year together. So, thank you.
I mean, you've pretty much already has been said, but Jim, I appreciate your kind of mentorship on the finance side. As a finance guy myself, but not really in the, as much expertise as Jim in the school area, I'm more of an operational manufacturing guy, so I've learned a lot. You know, I know I'm gonna miss some of that perspective, and you'll probably get a call or two from me over the next year. And I, I finally remember the first graduation, well, the only graduation I walked so far in my two years, and I was paired up with Jim, and just the, the levity and the camaraderie, camaraderie as we were walking. And it's, it's just something I'll remember, because it was, you know, it's a little bit intimidating the first time you're walking there, and you made it fun. And Jenna, same thing, I'll always, as Chris said, I'll remember when you were running, going to all 20 schools, just your compassion and your, you know, a, a lot of questions, but just coming from a point of, of caring and learning. I mean, I, I could just see from your questions, just continuing to learn and not be an expert, not thinking you were an expert and asking me the questions that I'm sure the community may ask. And, you know, I agree with everybody, whatever you said, I feel, feel really good about the way we've worked together, because we have very different perspectives and, but that's never had us back away from having each other's backs and, and working as a team. So, but thank you, we're gonna miss you.
So, I will go. I, I always fear of talking too much and sounding trite, so I, I just wanna, don't wanna do that. I've talked to each of you about how I feel and, you know, how much I appreciate and I'm gonna miss you. But I think what, what I take away from it is just reinforcement of what I've seen you guys, how you've behaved, how you've done your, done the job in the role of a board member. Humility, listening, listening to just people who disagree with you, listening to people who support you. And then, and at its heart, keeping the kids at the center of the conversation. I, I think that's just such a key characteristic of a good board member, is being able to take the support, take the criticism, and listen to it and thoughtfully consider it, and then making sure every conversation has kids in the middle. You know, I've, I've never saw you wave or off those principles, and that reinforces for me how to be a better board member, so thank you.
All right. Thank you for the board for those comments. Guess we'll turn it over to Jen and then Jim, if you want to make any final comments to, to the board and to the community.
Sure.
This is always the hardest part, right?
Yeah. I have to say that four years have really flown by to start with. And probably the most humbling moment of my life was the evening that I was elected to this position. So, I really appreciate the opportunity that the community gave me to serve in this way. It's been a wonderful experience. I am retiring only because I'm drawn by my children out of town, otherwise I would have wanted to stay and work with you all some more. But District 200 was very good to my children, so I've tried very hard to pay it forward and work on behalf of, you know, this current generation of District 200 children. District 200 is an amazing place to live and to, and to raise your kids and to send them through school. I want to give huge thanks to my school board colleagues for being with me on this journey. I have learned so much from each of you, and the, the key thing I take away that I will use for the rest of my life is understand that anytime you're working with a group of people, you have to start with a, a position of trust and respect for everyone there. Learn to let go of your ego. And as a very wise woman said, and I have taken to heart, seek first to understand in any conversation. Understand both the situation and understand the viewpoints of the people that you're working with as you're trying to problem solve together. Everybody here has added something different to my journey. Susan, I've never seen anybody do so much research in my life, even though I thought I loved a good research project. I appreciate that and all the education you then provided to your fellow board members and your passion while you're serving. Rob taught, taught us to understand each other by basically taking off his glasses and let us, letting us look through his lens, by starting conversations, explaining how he came to his decisions or how he started thinking about things. And that's how I learned to, to try and look through other people's lenses, and I think that's very helpful. Chris has always brought us back to the conversation about how things that we're talking about might affect teachers from her teacher perspective, and that's been really helpful. And Brad, you've been an amazing leader for the last couple of years, always keeping us on task, reminding us of things that we should be reading and studying up on ahead of, of our meetings, letting us know what's coming up. And, and early on in my tenure, you, at some my tenure, you, at some point, when we were so taken with facilities and budgets and whatnot, reminding us that we want to make sure every single meeting that we're talking about are kids, and bringing that back in. So, Dave, I have sat beside you at a lot of these board meetings, and I've loved that you've always got your blue index card, and you're ready to report to us things that you have learned while out and about in the school community. And again, that reminds me that it's important to see what's going on in our schools, and rather than just sitting up and talking about the high-level decisions. And I will echo what everyone else has said about Jim Matheson, who's been our great leader when it comes to all things financial. He mentored me when I first came on the board, and has helped us with annual cheat sheets to understand how to attack the audit reports and understand all the finance pieces from a layman's perspective, and I really appreciate that. And I too appreciate the fact that you took the time to ask questions that I know you knew the answers to at our board meetings, to make sure that the questions were asked in public for everybody in the community to hear the answer to and to understand that we were asking these questions, and that they got heard. So, I appreciate that too. It's been an amazing partnership, not only with my colleagues, but with the, all of the staff in the school, from Dr. Schuler's amazing leadership of our district. We are so blessed to have him with both his abilities and his partnerships with the wider educational community, with the communities that we serve, Wheaton, Carroll Stream, Warrenville, Naperville, you name it. And just the leadership style that allows us to have an amazing senior leadership team that are great people and are able to take ownership of their areas of expertise. And they've been amazing. And everybody from Dr. Schuler, everybody in the administration building, the building principals, the teachers, as a school board member in District 200, you were shown respect and friendship from the day you stepped into the position. I have never entered a school building or the administration building where I didn't feel like the doors were thrown open and the welcome mat rolled out. And teachers and principals, and even the kids, are so excited to show you what's going on and what they're doing. And that has been wonderful. So, I've enjoyed the conversations. It's been a learning experience, and I will keep on learning and take everything I've learned here, hopefully into partnerships with other educational communities wherever I land next. I hope, if I were to leave any kind of legacy, it would be the power of communication, to talk to each other, to talk to people in the district, to talk to community members, and especially, especially to talk to the students. And I will hope, I would ask of you that you continue to add more and more student voice to everything you do, both asking their opinions and making sure they know what's going on on their behalf. So, thank you, everybody. I will miss being a part of this board, but I look forward to watching you from afar. Thanks.
I've enjoyed the process. This is my, in effect, eighth board that I've worked with. Every two years, we have a new board. And I think this board was the most challenged with everything going on with COVID and so on, and really, really did a great job with flying colors to get us through what was probably the most challenging part of the eight years that I've been about. You know, a couple of things I am gonna miss now that I finally are starting to understand some of the buzzwords that you guys in the academic world use, you know, that I was catching on to that, and now I'll probably forget, you know. But keep that in mind, that the public always wants, they don't always know the buzzwords. So, that's always fun. And in addition, I think it's, you know, always keep the sense of humor a bit, you know. That, you know, I hope I brought some of that along the way, and, you know, that's important. But, you know, I'm not retiring from the community. I'm retiring from the school board or moving on, I guess. And I look forward to continue working with the community in many different ways. So, you know, I'll depend on you to take it to the next level here, and look forward to observing from wherever I sit at that time. So, I've enjoyed. Thanks a lot.
All right. Thank you, Jenna and Jim. And good luck on your journey, and we'll see you down the road. I guess we have to go to Minnesota to see you. You'll be back, I trust you'll be back. Okay, since this board has no further action and no other plan to meet, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn Cindy A. in order to conduct the reorganization of the newly seated Board of Education? Mrs.?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Erickson?
I better second.
Seconded by Mr. Matheson. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 All right. Thanks.